October 8th. Time for the regularly scheduled Village Board meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Ayello.
Here.
Trustee Bullthis.
Here.
Trustee Taglia.
Here.
Trustee Case.
Here.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Here.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Here. And if we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Jeff Stolgin, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. Our Father. Well, what's our pledge?
Our pledge is to the Father. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Taglia.
I'm Catholic.
Could all remain standing, please. Trustee Taglia, could you please lead us in a prayer?
Yes, sir. Other pledge. Our Heavenly Father, will thou be pleased to grant that this meeting thus begun in order, be conducted in peace, and closed in harmony?
Amen. All right. Real quick to give you an overview of the meeting. For those of you who haven't been here before, we will go through our agenda. We get to item five. It's public comments on agenda items, which pertain to items six through 12. If you want, if you are here, does everyone have an agenda? You can get an agenda right up at the front. If you would like to speak on something that is on the committee of the whole, there is an opportunity for each section throughout the committee of the whole to get up and speak. If you want to speak on something that has nothing to do with this agenda or the committee of the whole agenda, you will see item 19, which is public comments on non-agenda items. And we would please ask you to speak on non-agenda items at that time. So with that, we will go to item three, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
Who will approve the agenda?
Can I have a second, please?
President, a second.
Trustee Case.
Second.
Any questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
Trustee Bullthis.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item four, Village Presidents' Report. A, Consider Appointment of Christine Kruger to Environmental Concerns Commission. Can I have a motion for the appointment?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
Who will appoint Christine Kruger?
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
I second the motion.
Questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullthis.
What is the length of the term? When does this term end?
I'll let that to the manager.
All right, I'll take a quick peek.
Three years?
From when date?
April 2015.
April 2015.
Is the clerk going to record that in the minutes, please?
She just did.
Okay. In the future, if it's possible, to put down the dates on them when we do them, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, Trustee Bullthis.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
It's not from 2015, it's through.
Through 2015.
Okay. Swannamish.
Thank you. All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bullthis.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes. Item four, Village Presidents' Report. A, Consider Appointment of Christine Kruger to Environmental Concerns Commission. Can I have a motion for the appointment?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
Who will appoint Christine Kruger?
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
I second the motion.
Questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bullthis.
What is the length of the term? When does this term end?
I'll let that to the manager.
All right, I'll take a quick peek.
Three years?
From when date?
April 2015.
April 2015.
Is the clerk going to record that in the minutes, please?
She just did.
Okay. In the future, if it's possible, to put down the dates on them when we do them, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, Trustee Bullthis.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello.
It's not from 2015, it's through.
Through 2015.
Okay. Swannamish.
Thank you. All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bullthis.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Ayello.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. And is Ms. Kruger here? Would you like to be sworn in now?
Sure.
All right. We will have the clerks swear you in. She'll come right up to the podium. And your commissioner is here as well, so he will make sure to get you when the meeting is and start you working right away. Right, Bob?
(inaudible) face me. Okay. Raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I. I. Christine Kruger. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And to faithfully perform the duties. And to faithfully perform the duties. As a member of. As a member of. The Environmental Concerns Commission. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Thank you very much.
With that, we will go to item five, public comments on agenda items. If you would like to speak on agenda items, again, that is items six through 12, now would be your time to speak. Anyone to speak, and if you can come up, I believe, we do have a pad of paper up there. If you could print your name out for the clerk's report, and please keep it to approximately three minutes. And then state your name for all of us up here.
My name is Joe Schrantz, and I want to speak out against allowing video gambling in establishments where liquor is poured. I've lived in Villa Park for 46 years. Forty-six years? How did the time go by that fast? I think we have a very fine community, and I would very much like to help keep it that way. Allowing video gambling in drinking establishments, to me, is what I'd call a no-brainer. Everyone knows what drinking alcohol beverages, alcoholic beverages, does to willpower. It weakens it. As one imbibe, he's likely to become careless with his gambling and be subject to possible extensive monetary losses. I want to congratulate trustee John Davis for voting against this measure. I want also to urge trustee Alan Bullthis to vote against it instead of voting present. As for the trustees who voted to allow video gambling, I urge you to reconsider. For the good of Villa Park, vote against video gambling in drinking establishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone to speak, anyone else to speak on agenda items?
Hi, my name is Steve Swanson. I'm pastor at St. Paul Lutheran Church, and I'm here also to encourage you to vote against the video gambling. I speak firstly as a pastor who has seen within my community the devastation that gambling has done, and it's tragic what's happened. But I also have brought some documents that I'd encourage you to read. I've read them. One from the GAO, the Government Accounting Office, a document issued in 2000, and then another document that comes from the Law Review of the University of Illinois. And I want to just underscore a couple of items here. The GAO, after a very extensive study of three places, North Carolina, Montana, and Oregon, came away with several thoughts. First of all, generally, the unemployment rate appears to have been unaffected by legalization of convenience gambling in the three areas they studied. They said the amount of tax revenues and license fees that states received from convenience gambling ranged from 1% to 5% of the state budget. So there was money there, but not that much. They said that the atmosphere of video parlor pokers had a detrimental effect on community investment. In their study, they said that convenience gambling established or created a stigma that discouraged new businesses. And I'd hope you'd take a look at that. This is from this GAO study, and I know one of the things that we in Villa Park do want is additional business. And this extensive study said that it creates a stigma that turns businesses away from coming into the community. The officials in South Carolina said that the cost of convenience gambling outweighed the benefits, that convenience gambling, one very important thing that gambling and convenience gambling did do is it conveyed the belief that one can win something for nothing, reducing interest in working for a living. I think that's an important statement we must be cognizant of as we consider this. And then, I've got a few copies, I'll give them to you, Tom, of this shorter, briefer study from the University of Illinois. They're highly critical of the way in which the Illinois General Assembly passed the Video Gaming Act. It was very quick. It was not without a lot of community input, because there, of course, I guess we all need there's, there's a need for state revenue, and it was believed that this would be a quick revenue. But there's a lot of things in here, including a statement that "good government," the author insists, transcends the search for state revenues and seeks the well-being of its citizens. And I would call into question that gambling casinos really do seek the well-being of our citizens. I thank you very much, and if I, if you'll allow me, I will give you these documents for your evening reading. I've got three of those.
Thank you.
And I will give you my own with yellow marks. This is the GAO document that I referred to, and you're welcome to have.
Thank you. Do you want to make sure the board gets copies of all of this?
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on public comments on agenda items?
Kathy Gilroy, 230 West Division. Good evening. At the Committee of the Whole meeting two weeks ago, I spoke about why Villa Park should not authorize video gambling. The main argument I hear by those who would profit from video gambling is that their customers would go somewhere else if they don't get gambling machines. I would remind you that anyone who is so desperate to gamble that they would abandon their favorite local watering hole, or pizza parlor, or club to find a place to gamble has already done that. They're already going to a casino with 1,000 machines to choose from, a racetrack with live action, or even an off-track betting facility right here in town. With all of those choices, they are not going to drive to Carol Stream or Hoffman Estates to see if one of a bar's two or three gambling machines is unoccupied, unless they're already addicted. If all that new gambling places did was redistribute existing gamblers, they would be spread pretty thin by now. What convenience gambling does is evident by what it's called. It seduces people who may have never gambled before to try it while they're waiting for a meal. It ensnares people who wouldn't drive to a casino. Lights and sounds attract the passerby, who would have never otherwise gambled. I sent each of you a story written by an Illinois musician who lost $33,000 to gambling machines that little by little drained him of his $20,000 yearly earnings, bank savings, and IRA. He never did drugs and didn't own a credit card. He said that the slots led to a totally trashed life. Payouts on those machines were illegal at the time. He tried them anyway. Making the machines legal leads even more people to try them. When jars of peanut butter cause harm, they're taken off the market. Even dog food is taken off the market if it causes harm. One-armed bandits are known to cause all kinds of harm. Twice in this country's history, they have been taken off the market. They say that those who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Is Villa Park doomed? If you authorized video gambling, Villa Park would relinquish all control to the Illinois Legislature. They could increase the number of slots allowed, they could expand the type of places where they are allowed, to include grocery stores and gas stations, they could raise the tax, which would come right out of Villa Park liquor pouring establishment owners' pockets. According to Ed Pezo, Executive Director of the South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association, funding for the Capitol bill is still available, whether Villa Park allows slots or not. Funding also includes higher taxes on shampoo, candy, and liquor, and higher fees on driver's licenses and stickers. There was a bill to penalize communities that did not authorize video gambling, but the outrage was so great that it didn't pass. Chicago Mayor Emanuel does not want video gambling. If not authorizing video gambling caused any repercussions to occur from the state, you can bet that Mayor Emanuel would raise a stink. Gambling's addictiveness simply redirects what should have been sales for Villa Park grocery stores, gas stations, furniture stores, thrift stores, even church collection baskets, mortgages, and rent. Who is this board representing? Those Villa Park businesses and families, or just the bar owners? At a 1% addiction rate, which 220 Villa Park residents are you willing to sacrifice on the altar of profit? According to the California Council on Problem Gambling, over 60% of addicted gamblers commit crimes to support their habit. Which 132 neighbors would you nominate to be reduced to first-time criminals because of Villa Park slots? Smoking is legal, but not in this room. Alcohol is legal, but not in cars. Slots are legal, but best limited to highly regulated casinos, not in Villa Park businesses. Vices are popular, but good laws are not made by opinion polls. Who would vote for the current speed limits? The role of government is to protect constituents, not find ways to harm them. According to several village attorneys, if one-armed bandits move into Villa Park, they could be grandfathered in forever. Later, you could ban only new casinos, not existing ones. Why risk that? For now, please continue to ban slots, as towns and counties with 4.9 million residents already have, most recently Sugar Grove, Lake Zurich, and Clarendon Hills, but also Addison, Elmhurst, Lombard, and Oak Brook. Let's not make Villa Park a sin city surrounded by pleasant vills. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on agenda items?
Hello. Board, thank you for your time. My name is Tom Marfettis. I'm the owner at Caps Bar &amp; Grill in Villa Park. Previously, the last time we were here, I was asking that you guys consider allowing for Villa Park establishments to have gaming. And, you know, since the last time I was here, I've learned a lot more about it. An informational packet was forwarded to you, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. It was filled with facts, you know, from the gaming industry and from people that have, you know, know a lot more about it than I do. And I'm just hoping that you guys have an opportunity to look at that before you make any final decisions. I understand it's a very tough choice. You guys are in a very tough position to make a decision that affects the entire community. It also affects the people that work within the community, and it affects families directly, and many of which, the people that work in our establishments are local, and our customers are local, and we've been blessed to be able to make it in business as far as we have, especially the establishments in Villa Park. I understand that the decision is tough, and it's not something that should be taken lightly, but I also hope that you guys see the benefits. There are negatives to it, and I understand that, but the decision that was made by the state already was made, and, you know, as a whole, I believe that generally, most people realize that this is upon us. As President Colleton said, it's upon us, and in time, it's going to be knocking on our door, and for no other reason, I believe you guys should seriously consider allowing it. At some point in time, we might look back on it and decide that, you know what, maybe we missed, we missed the boat on it. So it's important that you really give it, give it some good thought. By delaying the vote, by delaying implementing this in Villa Park, you're going to put us at a disadvantage within the state. It's a highly regulated thing. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's, it's a process to be approved. It's, it's, you know, we've brought some people from within the industry that will hopefully speak on our behalf, and a little bit more eloquently than I can, obviously, but they have good information to disseminate to you, so that you know more about what's going to happen as far as the regulatory by the state, by the municipalities. By delaying, it would only increase the likeliness that we would be at the end of the pack, as opposed to being one of the first communities to implement it. I believe, in my opinion, that inevitably, most communities are going to approve it. I believe the reason is that it's not financially feasible, especially in this economic climate, to not be on the forefront and give people's opportunity. And as for, you know, I understand, you know, convenience gambling, convenience gambling is a, is a term that I think is used loosely, because I can walk into the gas station next door with my five-year-old son and buy as many scratch-off tickets for $30 a crack as I have money in my wallet. So convenience gambling's been here statewide for a long time. People that generally gamble, gamble. The ones that don't, don't. You guys, as adults, make your own decisions. If you wanted to gamble, you could go to a casino. If you wanted to gamble lightly, you'd go to the gas station and have a Subway sandwich and buy $30 scratch-offs till your pocket's empty. So it's there already. Don't look at it as we're going to be the only ones. It's more convenient to walk into a gas station than it is to come to one of our establishments and have a cheeseburger and put $10. As an adult that gambles, that's what they like to do. They make their own decisions. So I'd appreciate just a little bit more detailed thought on it, for the sake of us in the community and, and the people that work in our facility, in our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on agenda items?
How are you? Josh Shalomi from Universal Gaming Group. And I sat with some of your village small businesses tonight, and I understand all the great speaking before us, and I'm, obviously, I'm in favor of video gambling. I think one of the things that I've noticed, right now, we have 37 machines and nine establishments in six towns, including Hoffman Estates, which has five games. It is such a well-regulated business that it took us nine months just to get our license, after three years of delays. It is such a well-regulated business that it takes the applicants, the bars, somewhere between 60 and 150 days, and that number is growing as applications flooded. I think that if you're going to make a choice to do this, the time is now, or else these funds that are due to you from gambling will be years down the road. The business will definitely go out of your community. There's no two ways about that. If Town A and Town C have gambling and Town B doesn't, the convenience is already gone. They're going to go to those other places, just like they went to Hammond, Indiana, to the boats, before rivers and all that. It's low denomination, you know, gambling. It's penny gambling, it's nickel gambling, it's quarter gambling. Just like he said, you can go buy $30 scratch-up tickets till you're out of money. If it's a regulatory problem for the bars, I think you implement something along the lines of time on the machine, or, you know, just like you would regulate a problem drinker. You don't let him sit there and drink and drink and drink. You don't let somebody sit there and gamble and gamble and gamble. I cannot monitor that personally. I think my biggest thing is to tell you about what we've gone through as operators to get our license, what your people go through to get their license as establishments, and the continued emphasis that we put on regulating this and staying compliant. We put cameras in all the establishments that we view and the bars view 24 hours a day, and the machines turn off and turn on upon the liquor license time of the bar. So there's no after-hour parties, there's no kids sneaking in, we put up ropes that say "no under 21" in front of the games, and we put as many cameras as it makes you guys feel happy with, and we have somebody watching that 24 hours a day. I too am not a public speaker, so excuse me. The liquor license, that is your control. You can pull a liquor license from anybody that is not following your guidelines. So to say that we might have this forever, or that you're locked into it, and that you could only take it away, or only take away new casinos from coming in, isn't true. You have full control. If an establishment is not compliant, if we are not compliant, there's one phone call to the IGB, and it's turned down. So I think it is in your hands. I think it is missed opportunity if you don't take it now, and Universal is definitely a company that will help stay compliant with Villa, or Villa Park. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name's Dwayne Pollan with the Ardmore Lounge. I see the video gaming as a possibility for us to continue our support with the community. We help with fundraisers for the Villa Park Masonic Temple, the VFW, the Ardmore School, the St. Alexander's Church, and many other places, along with individuals that want to do fundraising for maybe a neighbor or some other person in the community that needs it. And that's how I see the video gaming, to be able to help support the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on an agenda item?
Hi, my name's Paul Mahoney. I own Mahoney's Pub on Villa Park, or on Villa Avenue. I've lived in Villa Park for 40 years. It's a great community. I love living here. I'm new to the bar business, as far as being an owner. I opened in March of 2011, and, or, in May of 2011, the street was tore up, plus all the money I put into that building to, to make it a better building, a better establishment for the company, or customers in town here. What, people think that bar owners are made of money, and, and this, this business is not what I thought it would be. There are just the taxes and fees alone. We pay property tax, sales tax, payroll tax, eating and drinking tax, liquor tax, liquor license fees, health fees, our health department fees. After all these fees and the cost of doing, just doing business, my bartenders make more than I do. The video gambling will help create revenue for this village and for the small business and those who are struggling like me. It's not like it used to be, when, when everyone was working and everyone had a lot of money in their pockets, go out to the bars, you know, it's, it's a hard business to be in. The state decided to create revenue this way, and I, I think Villa Park should take advantage of this. And by doing it in a timely manner, we'll be able to take advantage of more of the revenue that's possible for the village and the businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on agenda items?
Hi, my name's Paul Mahoney. I own Mahoney's Pub on Villa Park, or on Villa Avenue. I've lived in Villa Park for 40 years. It's a great community. I love living here. I'm new to the bar business, as, as far as being an owner. I opened in March of 2011, and, or, in May of 2011, the street was tore up, plus all the money I put into that building to, to make it a better building, a better establishment for the company, or customers in town here. What, people think that bar owners are made of money, and, and this, this business is not what I thought it would be. There are just the taxes and fees alone. We pay property tax, sales tax, payroll tax, eating and drinking tax, liquor tax, liquor license fees, health fees, our health department fees. After all these fees and the cost of doing, just doing business, my bartenders make more than I do. The video gambling will help create revenue for this village and for the small business and those who are struggling like me. It's not like it used to be, when, when everyone was working and everyone had a lot of money in their pockets, go out to the bars, you know, it's, it's a hard business to be in. The state decided to create revenue this way, and I, I think Villa Park should take advantage of this. And by doing it in a timely manner, we'll be able to take advantage of more of the revenue that's possible for the village and the businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on agenda items?
My name's Kevin Galec. I'm, I'm with G3 Gaming. I'm a licensed terminal operator here in the state of Illinois, and like the company of Universal, I want to explain to the leaders here at Villa Park, you know, this is a highly regulated business that we wish to bring to your community, and it's, it's more licensed, regulated, and, and looked over than any other industry that you guys have in your city limits. You know, we, we go on a daily basis answering to IGB agents, retired state police, lawyers, state officials, on a daily basis. Every move we make has to be documented. In, in the gaming business, they say it's more, it's more of a paperwork business, because every move we make has to be documented. Every machine we move has to be documented. Every time we open a machine, it is documented. So I, I just want the board to understand that bringing this gaming and supporting the small businesses here in this city...[1526.47]
And Universal is definitely a company that will help stay compliant with Villa Park. Thank you.
My name's Dwayne Pollan with the Ardmore Lounge. I see the video gaming as a possibility for us to continue our support with the community. We help with fundraisers for the Villa Park Masonic Temple, the VFW, the Ardmore School, the St. Alexander's Church, and many other places, along with individuals that want to do fundraising for maybe a neighbor or some other person in the community that needs it. And that's how I see the video gaming, to be able to help support the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on an agenda item?
Hi, my name's Paul Mahoney. I own Mahoney's Pub on Villa Park, or on Villa Avenue. I've lived in Villa Park for 40 years. It's a great community. I love living here. I'm new to the bar business as far as being an owner. I opened in March of 2011. In May of 2011, the street was tore up. Plus, all the money I put into that building to make it a better building, a better establishment for the company, or customers in town here. What people think that bar owners are made of money. And this business is not what I thought it would be. There are just the taxes and fees alone. We pay property tax, sales tax, payroll tax, eating and drinking tax, liquor tax, liquor license fees, health fees, our health department fees. After all these fees and the cost of doing, just doing business, my bartenders make more than I do. Video gambling will help create revenue for this village and for the small business and those who are struggling like me. It's not like it used to be when everyone was working and everyone had a lot of money in their pockets to go out to the bars. You know, it's a hard business to be in. The state decided to create revenue this way, and I think Villa Park should take advantage of this. And by doing it in a timely manner, we'll be able to take advantage of more of the revenue that's possible for the village and the businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on agenda items? Thought I was moving on.
My name's Kevin Galletka. I'm with G3 Gaming. I'm a licensed terminal operator here in the state of Illinois. And like the company of Universal, I want to explain to the leaders here at Villa Park, you know, this is a highly regulated business that we wish to bring to your community. And it's more licensed, regulated, and looked over than any other industry that you guys have in your city limits. You know, we go on a daily basis answering to IGB agents, retired state police, lawyers, state officials, on a daily basis. Every move we make has to be documented. In the gaming business, they say it's more of a paperwork business because every move we make has to be documented. Every machine we move has to be documented. Every time we open a machine, it is documented. So, I just want the board to understand that bringing this gaming and supporting the small businesses here in this city, it's not opening up the wild, wild west. It's a highly regulated, we have a lot of people to answer to. There's no other business that every move we make, you guys will be able to see at the same time also. It's public knowledge. I recently sent the village manager a document on Illinois video gaming, which I believe all of you should have received. It has some tax comparisons. I see a couple people saying no, but check your spam. I know you guys like to throw his stuff to spam. But anyhow, it shows some tax comparisons, what you can expect from the VGT revenue, and I compared it in there to your eating and drinking taxes that you collected in 2011. I also compared it to your home rule tax that you guys have and also your personal property placement tax. And you will be astonished to know that, I mean, it's a pretty good tax increase outside of the licensing and stuff that I'm sure the village will put on their own. I've been doing business here for over 15 years, my family for close to 20. We go through more licensing here in Villa Park and more background than I think any town that I do business in. My mother, she had to go through, I believe, a state police and FBI background check just to do business here about 15 years ago. I also, in that packet, refer to the money that was allocated from the capital bill to the city of Villa Park. And I believe that number is about $570,000. It also has where that money was supposed to be going to. Whether the state decides to punish towns for not participating with their capital money, whether they punish them or not, the capital bill funding is in jeopardy because this is the source for that funding. And if you take the source away or people don't participate at the rate that the lawmakers down in Springfield intended, the capital projects that you guys have allocated are in jeopardy. So, regardless if they punish you or not, that funding is jeopardized by towns not participating. I just wanted to say that this is law, this is the state of Illinois, this is in the state of Illinois. It's been approved, it's been tried, it is coming here, it is staying here for a long time because we all understand the economic times that are here in front of us. And that's why the hospitality group desires this. They've been punished in and out. Every time the cities and the state want to increase taxes, they look at the hospitality section industry, you know, and smoking was banned. We didn't get a choice on that. You know, liquor increase, licensing increase. So, this is something that is law, and they just wish to participate. You all have my contact information. I'll answer any questions, you know, offline, roundtable, whatever you desire. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items?
Hello, my name is Carol Frederick. I live at 817 South Ardmore, and I've worked at Cap's Bar and Grill since it opened 23 years ago. I pride myself in providing good service, good food, and fun times. I've seen kids come in when they were 21, and now they're bringing their kids into the bar. I don't want the village to miss an opportunity for all of us here. I've worked at that bar hard, I've paid my bills, I've paid my taxes here, and I want you all to consider letting us have an opportunity that the state has approved.
Any other questions or comments on agenda items?
Hi, my name is Brendan Fitzharris, and I own the Irish Bulldog on St. Charles Road. I'm here as a small business owner, in which I'm sure some of you might be and are work for companies that are small businesses, that times are tough now, and we all know it. So, we're here, basically, I think, I agree with everyone that spoke over here, but I don't want to repeat everything they said, so I'm just going to make a few points. We're here to ask for your help. You guys are here for the businesses and the citizens. I understand that. You're not just here to help us, you're here to help everybody. But I want to make a few points. Number one, the bets that you can make on these machines go from a penny to the max bet of $2. Any big gamblers that really want to play a game of poker or craps or whatever, they're going to go to a casino and they're going to bet the mortgage or that kind of stuff. This stuff is just for fun, it's small money. You'd really have to spend a lot of time to lose a lot. The estimated revenue, we just kind of estimated 20 establishments, bars and restaurants with liquor license, I don't know if there's, I think there's much more than that, but that would be about an increase in taxes for the village of $200,000 to $300,000. Now, those are not hard numbers, that was just kind of something we did, but it was pretty close. And from what they said, the percentage was lower in states and towns that were smaller populations than us. So, that could even be more. And then if those go up, then our sales taxes are going to go up, which is going to benefit us both. As everyone said, gambling's here. You can play the Lotto, you can do scratch-offs. Churches have bingo, they have Super Bowl pools, I mean, schools do that. They get special, you know, permits for it sometimes. But gambling's coming, and it's here. I think, you know, it's very regulated, which is important. It's not just going in and going crazy. So, I just want to thank you for consideration and hope you guys can help us out.
Come on up.
Hi, my name is Anthony Odo. I own Michael Anthony's Pizza on Villa Avenue. I currently don't have a liquor license, so I'm not even here to talk about the benefits of having gaming. But as a small business owner, in these times, I think any opportunity that we can have to improve business and profits, we should take a close look at utilizing those. And the state has passed, you know, this law, and I think it would be a good opportunity at least to look at it and have that possibility. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comments on agenda items? Item six, consent agenda. A, resolution authorizing Halloween trick-or-treat hours. B, minutes from village board meeting September 24, 2012. C, minutes from village COW for September 24, 2012. D, approved bill listing dated October 8, 2012, in the amount of $445,674.17. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Aiello?
Second.
Questions or comments? I have a comment, and I want to ask the board how they feel. Anyone, Manager Keener and I were talking. Anyone mind moving trick-or-treat hours to actually either 7:30 or 8:00? Or is that too late?
They're knocking on the doors at that time anyway.
I mean, it seems everybody's knocking. Is everybody, I'd like to see, I mean, it seems we get a lot of families who come home from work not even till 5:30, so it only gives them about an hour with their kids to go out, hour, hour and a half with their kids to go out. Anybody opposed?
No.
I'm still knocking at 9:30.
I know, you're still out knocking at 9:30 at night. That's correct.
You hit my house last year three times.
So, would it be all right to make a motion to amend the hours to go from 3:00 till 8:00? Do I have to, can I adjust that, or does whoever made the motion have to adjust that?
I have to go first.
Pardon me?
If I want to switch this to 8:00?
For the formality of it, for a temporary resolution like this, it is one application. I think the board will concur with your amendment and vote on the consent agenda as amended with regard to that item to the specific time of?
8:00.
8:00.
What did she say?
Hours are from 3:00 to 8:00. That's the point. Yes. Means hours are from 3:00 to 8:00.
All right, so hours will be from 3:00 to 8:00, the evening of Halloween. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing non-roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Bulthas?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Motion passes. Item eight, first and final reading of an ordinance authorizing the sale by public auction of personal property seized vehicles owned by the village of Villa Park. Can I have a motion on the first and final?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bulthas?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Trustee Aiello?
Second.
Any questions or comments for the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item eight, first reading of an ordinance of the village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, authorizing video gaming and imposing a fee for video gaming terminals. Can I have a motion on the first reading?
Mr. President.
Trustee Aiello?
Who for the first reading?
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Case?
Second.
Questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
In our last reading, I said no to this, but it wasn't to the fact of gambling. I really don't care either way about the gambling issue. What I do care about, as I said last time, well, A, it's not our job to tell people what they can't and can't do personally. Like I said, my father was an alcoholic, that whole addiction thing doesn't work for me. It's not hereditary. Secondly, my concern is states broke. We haven't been paid at the village level since April for all the money they owe us. My concerns for the small businesses is you guys getting your money. That's what scares me. That's the only hang-up I have on us guys, is you guys getting your money. And I haven't seen anywhere where they're paying up. And until somebody proves that to me otherwise, I'm still going to say no, and I'm saying it's a protection for you all. Somebody can prove to me on paper, I'm all about it.
Would you like, hold on.
No, sit, please. Thank you. Sorry. I'll let, Trustee Davis, actually, if you want to ask a question, probably the vendors, I would imagine, would be better to answer the question than the tavern owners if they have some answers.
If somebody can answer it, I'd appreciate it.
Either one of the, either one of the...
Josh Shalomea.
Here, if you can come to the microphone.
The funds are all swept into one account, which we, the terminal operator, hold. The state comes in and takes the city and state's money on the 1st and 15th of every month before we get our profits, before we get any of our money back, and is divvied to the communities and to the state automatically. It's all monitored by a $90 million server that the state funded through Scientific Games. So, there's not a chance, not a 1% chance, not a half a 1% chance, that they do not get the rent. It is impossible.
That check comes from you?
The check from us, no. The state comes in and sweeps it all out. They take it out. We don't even have a choice.
They take their portion.
Correct. They take their portion.
The restaurants and vendors can receive a check from licensed operators like them.
Right.
So, when does that man get paid after 30 days of...
The 1st and 15th of every month.
And he gets paid from you all?
Correct.
And you have a live terminal going right now.
Correct. We have a live terminal right now, so somebody's going to get paid.
Just to clarify for Trustee Davis, so the bar and restaurant owners receive their check from you.
Correct.
We're the ones in jeopardy from the state, as we are with our motor fuel tax, as we are with pretty much everything that the state owes us on a consistent basis. So, at this point, it is not the bar owners that would be suffering from it. It's the state of Illinois not paying their bills to us is her usual, and that's not your usual.
We will pay the state, and we will pay the establishments.
You'll have another credit.
Does that answer the question, Trustee Davis?
Half of it. Half of it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Bullwinkle?
I have a question for the manager. What's the projected revenue that the village is expecting to receive from this if we do this?
Quite honestly, staff has not researched that. However, there were numbers that evening from the individual we had come before the board, and I believe they were close to half a million, right around $500,000.
How realistic is that?
The estimate is no particular bar. I don't know the rules at the terminal level, but I do know the rules that would apply to us. We can only charge $25 per machine with a maximum of five machines in any establishment. If the establishment is very busy, the guesstimate is each machine would generate somewhere around $10,000. Now, I don't know how many liquor licenses we have in Villa Park or if we know how many liquor establishments would proceed to get video gaming because many of our liquor license holders are retailers or family restaurants that don't want to keep it. But the estimate would be approximately $50,000 if the establishment wanted to get five as our share. Now, that's a number that's an absolute guesstimate because we don't know how busy the terminal would be. But that is, to support what Rich said, the estimate, if we have 10 establishments at five machines, that would be the half a million that was quoted to us guarantees. I'm just telling you everything I've read.
Right. Just projections, I understand that. And then, Manager Keener, what's the plan for that money? Will it be earmarked for something specific like roads or something that we have needs for in town?
I believe that would be up to the board, but I'm certainly, you know, I'm sure that can be addressed at the appropriate time.
Yeah, because if we do this, I'd like to see the money used for something like that. If we're looking at that kind of money, but we'll see, time will tell, but, okay. It's all right now.
Thank you, Trustee Bullwinkle. Anyone else on the first reading of the ordinance?
If we get one more reading, right?
There'll be one more reading. It will be in the last meeting of October, the formal board meeting, which is October 22nd. Trustee Case?
I don't know who I can ask this question to. Not every establishment will probably get them that lineup because of the extensive background check. Am I correct?
Well...
Eric, if you can come to the mic again.
If I may. It's a hard question to answer. Usually, the rule of thumb so far has been if you have a clean liquor license and you don't have a felony, there is no reason for them not to license you.
Okay. I can add to that.
To the microphone, please. Thank you. The answer, everybody will have just as a difficult chance of getting it as the next person. A couple variables that people, being how regulated this, if you owe child support, you will not get a license. So, they look at every tax record of yourself, child, your divorce, your different lawsuits that you may have had against you, and any liquor license infractions, because they'll interview the police here in town, too, to say, hey, is that bar a good bar? Can you give me the problems you've had with them? So...
Doesn't a bankruptcy disqualify you as well if you have tax liens against you or anything of that nature?
If you have tax liens, if there's an agreement with the IRS and you're making payments on that, and they've ruled you in good standing, but you're on a payment plan, that will not count against you. But bankruptcies are highly looked at by the gaming board. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Bulthas?
First, thank both sides for coming here tonight. And I do have some problems with video gambling, but it's a personal decision people have to make if they want to do it or not. I don't know if it's the village's responsibility to legislate morality. It's really not. But I do have some questions. We got some information that was given to the president from Reverend Swanson and an email that I was supposed to have received from the terminal operators. I haven't seen that information yet, and as any of the public here know me, I like to read these things before I make a decision. So, I would like to get that information so that, you know, I can look it over and weigh the decision I have to make. One question I have, you know, you say most establishments are eligible for video gambling. But do they, do you go in there and look to see and analyze if it's going to be profitable to you as the gaming, as a person who puts in the machines? Because my impression would be, you're not going to put it in there if you don't think you're going to get a return on your investment. So, if the establishment is already not making a certain amount of money, you might not get your return. So, am I right with assuming you're also going to look at that?
I would probably add, either one of the terminal owners?
Yeah, please. Either one.
Yes, and usually, what's adjusted there is the number of machines. So, we're not going to give an establishment that gets 10 people a week, five machines. All the investment comes at our end. And I think somebody earlier said this causes a lot of money for the city, and I don't know what money it causes, you guys. We're in for $15,000 a machine, we're in for $15,000 redemption machines, we're in for refilling the cash. We're in for servicing the machines. We're in for all, the whole nut. Um, to, to answer your point, yes, of course, we're not gonna put five machines in an establishment that needs one. I can say, and the numbers that we base our numbers upon for Illinois, based on other areas, the, the Louisianas, West Virginias, South Dakotas, um, there has been places that have gotten liquor licenses, not even poor drinks, but gotten that license because of how profitable it has been. And a lot of that stems around a gentleman, a good story. It's a gentleman in Louisiana figured out that older ladies did not want their car parked in front of a bar all day. And he had a bakery. So he started serving beer and wine. In that bakery, he went from making $1,500 a week to somewhere around $15,000 to $20,000 a month. Um, this is not bringing any bad element in, especially if it's in surrounding areas. And I think the stigma unattached from illegal gambling allows it to be fun again, and allows normal people that wouldn't go to a bar and, and get cash under a table, a, a chance to do something in their community that they don't have to drive 45 minutes or an hour to do.
I think you strayed a little bit from my question, but I appreciate your caution.
I think, I think the question, um, you're not gonna put, it, since you have all the money, I think, I think I can decipher, since he's in for all the money, he's not putting it where it's not making money.
Well, my point was to the bar owners, just because you're asking for a machine, that doesn't mean you're gonna get it. And if, and if you're struggling already, this might not be your answer, though it's gonna bail you out. See, I think you need to know that, you know, upfront, you know, so...
May I respond to that real quick, though? If a bar doesn't get licensed, and we're the terminal operator, we will give them machines. That, that's our commitment to them.
Oh, okay.
If it gets licensed?
Excuse me?
You're saying if it gets licensed?
If they get licensed and they want machines, if we gotta try one machine, we'll try it. That's a risk we're willing to take. So I, I told the establishments that earlier. I didn't want to not say it in front of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, somebody did mention, I think about the way the law is written now, there isn't really many, much more ordinances that we can have put in effect to regulate these machines and how, and how they're used. I think being a non-home rule community, the way the state law is written, that's what we have. So we can't make any more stringent regulations on this. So, um, the way it is, that's the way it is. One of the other things, though, we have two different opinions here, plus gambling, minus gambling. One of the other provisions in the law that we might want to think about is, we could vote to put this into a referendum and let the community decide if we want to have, um, have gambling and, uh, video gambling in our establishment. So that's something else that the board might want to think about. Um, let the community decide and see what they have to say about it. And they can, the community, if they decide, if we vote to do it and they don't want it, they could pass petitions and get it on the ballot and get a referendum anywhere, even though the state has set the bar kind of high for the number of signatures that are needed to have that happen. So, um, you know, before I really make a vote on this, I'll probably vote present again tonight, because I want to read this information that was given to us up here before I make a final decision and really think about it. So, um, you know, if you could get me that information, get me that email. I'll give you my card. You could send that directly to me. So just in case it gets in my spam, you know, I'll, you know, so...
And just so you know, trustee Balthus, manager Keener's gonna be making copies of everything Pastor Swanson gave us to distribute to everybody on the board.
Okay.
Um, so they will have all these copies. And as trustee Davis has said, there will be a second reading on this. This is just the first reading. Uh, if, by approving tonight, it does not become an ordinance, it does not become permitted, it only goes to a second reading. So, and that reading will be October 22nd, if it passes first reading this evening. Any other questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello?
What I'd like to see is that GAO report, so I appreciate we're gonna get that. What I'd like to see from you guys from, uh, Universal and, uh...
G3.
G3, sorry, is if you've got something, I don't want to see a bunch of smoke and mirrors. I want to see, if you've got a GAO report that says that GAO, GAO report is bad, then I'd like to see that. I don't want to see an industry report that tells me something. I want to see something from the GAO. I like the GAO idea. And I trust the GAO to tell me that, pretty accurately, what's perfectly accurate with the studies they've done. The industry, I'm not gonna trust. I can't trust the industry. I need, I need something more objective. So, but I'm sure the industry has found something more objective than something produced by the industry. So if you guys could give me something else to counter that, I'd at least like to look at that kind of documentation. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Trustee Balthus?
I agree with Chris. Uh, I'm really, I'm not interested in the money and how much money the machines are gonna make for the village, you know? That's not my question. So you can float me with all kinds of money and, hey, you know, it's, it's just a question if it's right or wrong. So, for me.
Any other questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
Is there a way that we can find out how the state is paying the municipalities on the current machines that are offered?
The state's not paying. That's my understanding.
The state pays the local...
The state will pay us.
Oh, state pays us.
You're saying how many, you're saying have the communities...
Are they paying out on the local, sort of local municipalities? Because right now, I have more faith in these guys giving us a check.
Well, yeah.
Now, if they were saying they were getting enough money, I tell you right now, go ahead with it, but...
Um, I can say, I can say this, that the distribution of funds for the off-track betting comes at actually a better rate than, and a, and a more timely and more efficient than the actual, uh, distribution of the motor fuel tax, distribution of income tax, distribution of essentially any taxes that the state collect, come at a much slower rate than the distribution of, say, the off-track betting, uh, revenue. That actually comes to us in a timely and, you know, in the manner it's supposed to and per, per the state statutes. Uh, but the motor fuel tax, they're holding. And they've extended out what they used to pay in 60 days. They're now paying in 120.
No.
Well, longer than that, I was being nice to the state.
We're at six plus.
Um, but the reality is, is that the off-track betting funds that communities are getting is coming in a timely manner and coming when it's supposed to.
Can I have that in writing somewhere approved?
Sure.
Huh?
Huh?
I appreciate it, because, I mean, I'm trying to protect them, but ultimately...
They seem like they're protected. They seem like they're more protected than we are from the state of Illinois.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for the board? Remember, this is just, if you vote yes tonight, this is just moving it on to a second reading. Uh, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
No.
Trustee Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
President.
Trustee Taglia?
No.
President Colton.
Yes, this'll move on to a second reading. Item nine, a resolution to accept the proposal offered by Elmhurst Memorial Health Care for mandatory testing programs. Can I have a motion on the resolution?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello?
Move for the resolution.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis?
I will second that.
Questions or comments from the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
President Colton.
Motion passes. Item 10, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the financial report on the operations and cash flows of the Sugar Creek Golf Course. Can I have a motion on the resolution?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello?
Move for the resolution.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Case?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President.
Trustee Balthus?
So if we pass this, what happens next? What, what does this, you know, sort of public, what does this mean? You know, we accept the report, right? Then that's, um, because there are some things in this report that I think need to be addressed with the golf course. You know, just one that I'm looking at here right now is, they have a green fees that they charge adults and what they charge, uh, minors. And they keep track of the number of rounds that they, they play. But the revenue for the rounds is lower than what their green fees are, when you average it out. And that tells me, there's a lot of people over there golfing and they're not paying to golf. So, you know, that needs to be addressed. That's just one item on, on this report that needs to be addressed. And, you know, are we gonna, how are we gonna follow up with this and make them, um, total line over there? Because, because this report also says they're bleeding money over there. So...
Go right ahead.
Take a drink of water, your honor.
It's a very good question. Or questions. Um, there are a number of conclusions and recommendations within the Wolf and Company, um, financial analysis of the Sugar Creek, uh, golf course. As many of us are aware, this golf course is owned and operated by the Village of Villa Park and the Elmhurst Park District. And for, excuse me, for a number of years, the Elmhurst Park District was responsible for the items inside the building, whether it be administration, IT, human resources, things of that nature. The Village of Villa Park was responsible for things outside the building, the parking lot, uh, maybe assisting trimming the trees, security, or police department would drive by, et cetera. Um, when I first came here and to, to Villa Park, April of, uh, 2011, it was brought to my attention that the rounds of golf were down, um, and the board wanted me to take a look into it. So I did take a look into it. And, and more looks and some, and dove into it. And what we really have is, uh, we have the golf course, which makes its budget. It makes its budget a little differently than most organizations. The folks that make the budget at the golf course make the budget off of budgeted figures from last year, not actual. So when you put the budget together, they're using the budget. Uh, you don't make the budget from one year to one year, but the individuals look back at the budgeted numbers, not the actuals, but the budget. So over a number of years, uh, there's been some deficits at this golf course. And staff and I have dove in, and we, uh, we're not gonna allow that to happen, basically. So we had, we had a meeting today at the golf course to discuss next year's budget. Uh, the Elmhurst, Elmhurst Park District is on a January 1 fiscal year. We're on a May 1 fiscal year. So there's some tight timelines to get this budget adopted. Uh, we have reviewed the proposed budget from the golf course in Elmhurst Park District. It was not a balanced budget. It showed a deficit, showed a deficit of $38,000 after taking into consideration the, uh, the loans, the expenses, and the revenues. Uh, staff and I still had concerns about the number of rounds of projected for next year, along with the use fees, which trustee Balthus just mentioned. The daily use fees seemed like they were out of character, if you will. Uh, so we looked at doing a three-year average and a five-year average, just to see where these numbers came in. Uh, and again, those numbers were, came from the budgeted numbers from previous years rather than the actuals. So we had a very good discussion this afternoon. And staff proposed thousands of dollars of reductions within the budget that would bring it, uh, into something that you would consider and approve at some sort of board meeting in the future. Uh, however, uh, that would require Elmhurst Park District to absorb some activities at no cost. And, um, if they were not willing to do that, I propose that we would do it, as, as our staff, to take those numbers out to make the, the golf course more profitable. And, um, that's really what I, I can go into more, but I'd rather not. Um, to answer your question succinctly, uh, I am on the board now, the administrative board, along with some other folks, including Greg Gold, our Director of Parks and Recreation. And we are heavily involved in the day-to-day operations. We have monthly meetings, and we openly discuss the number of rounds. And if we don't meet the number of rounds on a monthly basis, we're going to react to get things into sync, so that you don't continue a deficit till the end of the fiscal year. You have to react to the deficit. Uh, and our Vitas, Vitas and I have spoken, Vitas is our Budget Officer and Treasurer. We're going to seek if a, a specific line item within the budget that addresses the deficit that has occurred since 2004, and we're going to look for a reduction every year until the deficit is eradicated. And then the next question is, okay, what's the deficit, Keener? Deficit's about $976,000. And so we're digging in, and, um, my favorite line is, it is what it is. So we're gonna dig in, we're gonna reduce the expenditures, we're gonna improve the revenues by getting accurate numbers for the budget and doing more marketing and promotion. We've reached out to the community and discussed with certain business owners, would you like to market on the range balls? Would you like to put your logo on there? Would you like to supply the mats so when we're swinging our clubs, we look down? And it could be, um, a local business that wants to advertise on the mat. Would you like to create a banner, which we would hang on our driving range net, so everybody looks at it all the time? Uh, would you like to do a football game, um, kind of banquet that would lure people into the banquet facilities? Not so much for golf, but to use the banquet facilities. Um, things of that nature. And Greg, I know I probably skipped a couple. But, uh, I know that we also reached an agreement, which wasn't implemented, that we would advertise on golf carts. We'd have license plates from a local establishment, uh, that was a financial institution, that we'd have a license plate on the golf carts. Well, we're looking into why it was not implemented. So, does that answer your question?
Yes. And, uh, more than enough. But I, you know, you can go back. For me, we've got, now we have seven years of numbers here. And I would say, if they don't come back here with a budget, which we have to approve, that's balanced, using realistic numbers that I can check now, um, there's no way I can vote in favor of it. So...
I, I think if we'd like to ask Director of Finance, uh, Lump, I was very nice but aggressive at today's meeting. And, uh, I'm not gonna bring a budget that you're not going to approve.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Trustee Ayello?
You can always mention to the people that actually run the day-to-day operations that, you know, letting someone play a round and not charging them is really theft of services or theft. So that's your hammer. It's a, it's a crime. You're stealing rounds of golf. To keep that round on the table and paid for.
Well, really, first, excuse me.
Trustee Balthus?
In my opinion, I think everybody who plays golf there should pay. You know, City of Chicago and all the other municipalities, well, big ones are saying, you don't get anything free. Just because you work in Villa Park or you work at the golf course, you have to pay your way. And I think that's what they ought to have over there. So, that's my opinion. But I don't golf, so...
I agree. I like, I like the idea of, if you, if you play a round...
That's fine.
Pay. You know, they charge the Woolbrook to have their girls and boys play over there, so everyone should pay. Can I golf? Occasionally.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, one point that, uh, your honor and I were, was speaking about just now is that a change this year at the golf course was, and this is really, uh, in the field of golf, at the golf courses, that the starters, uh, are not paid anymore. Uh, they work for the golf course, but they work for free rounds of golf. So they can be a starter and do other activities just like they normally do. But in lieu of pay, they're offered free rounds of golf any, anytime they can squeeze it.
So there will be...
We already have exceptions.
So there will be an exception, but they aren't getting a salary, and they're getting a paycheck, and they aren't receiving anything, and they still work. I just realized, I don't want, I don't want all of a sudden a couple of retired guys to be sitting there getting hammered when, when all they are doing is their job.
No, they're, they're trading. They're not stealing.
Right. They're trading. There you go. All right. Any other questions or comments on the resolution? Roll call, please. replace the CSO Sludge Chain Collector System Project Wet Weather Flow Treatment Facility. Can I have a motion on the resolution?
Mr. President?
Trustee Davis?
Uh, making a motion, but also a comment.
Well, can you wait till I get a second? Thank you. Second on the motion?
Mr. President?
Trustee Boulis?
I will second it for Trustee Davis.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Seeing none? Oh, Trustee Davis?
We'll take roll call last.
What?
Were we supposed to take roll call at last?
On the resolution?
We did.
We did.
We told you we'd take roll call.
I didn't say that.
Everybody, we, we can.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the resolution?
That's what I said.
Oh, what you said?
Roll call, please.
This is a roll call.
Trustee Ayala?
Yes.
Trustee Boulis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
I'll roll call with this one.
Which is?
Which was?
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you. And President Carter.
Resolution passes.
Yes, it's a no's.
It's silly time done, Trustee Davis.
Paying attention to something.
All right. Uh, item 12, resolution to approve the purchase of two Dodge Chargers through Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. Uh, can I have a motion to table until after Committee of the Hall?
Mr. President?
Trustee, uh, Boulis?
So, vote.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President?
Roll call, please. Trustee Davis with a second.
Trustee, uh, Boulis?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Ayala?
Yes.
President Carter.
All right. This will be tabled until after Committee of the Hall. Item 13, Village Clerk's Report. Uh, Clerk Coronecki?
Just one thing, just want to thank everyone who participated in the Kiwanis Night Golf Event last Friday. It was a lot of fun. Thank you for coming. That's all.
Thank you. Item 14, unfinished business, none. 15, new business, none. 16, Village Manager's Report. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make one comment about the Kiwanis Night Golf also. I, uh, participated and there were three color of balls, blue, red, and green. And when the red ones were hit, it looked like meteors across the sky when it came down on the, uh, the course. It was pretty neat, uh, very enjoyable. Uh, for those of you who did not participate this year, uh, please come out next year. It was awesome. So, thanks, Your Honor. Uh, I do have a number of items. I apologize in advance, Your Honor, but I do have a couple of items. Uh, for the Van Beuren Street, uh, which we're often asked about, I think, uh, the soil boardings were taken. We haven't analyzed them yet, but they have been taken, so we're making progress on that. Uh, South Michigan, the sewer was televised with our new television, uh, equipment. We haven't analyzed the tape shed, but that's been done now to move forward with that. Um, I'm sure most of you have noticed, hopefully, uh, street striping is complete, so Ardmore looks good, Villa looks very good, and, uh, some of the intersections at the schools look very good. Staff this weekend began, uh, uh, striping several village parking lots with the new piece of equipment that we purchased. I think the village hall was done Saturday. Uh, not quite an opportune time due to the public hearing that we're holding, but, uh, turned out very nice. Uh, I watched staff do it and, uh, they're very talented. I'm not sure I could do that, so. Um, next item is the item, uh, that we've talked about many times. Uh, staff has borrowed a stump grinder from a local, uh, village, uh, I believe the village of Romeos, if that's correct, staff. Romeo?
Romeoville.
Romeoville.
I'll get it.
Riverport.
Riverport.
Close to Romeoville, I guess.
I'll keep working on it.
Sorry to say that.
So, uh, so what we've done, we haven't had a stumping program in a number of years. So we had a list from '09, 2010, 2011, and 2012. Right now, we've eliminated 2009, 2010, 2011, and we're partway through 2012. What we've done is we went through the neighborhoods and ground down the stumps. So you may drive down a street and see a pile of mulch. Um, since we borrowed the stump grinder, we want to use the stump grinder first. We'll take it back, then we'll come back and make sure that the, uh, that the right-of-way looks nice and presentable. We just don't want to have the stump grinder for six months or anything.
The residents whose houses we've done this in front of this know this?
Yes, and they're very appreciative.
Okay. Just want to make sure they don't get upset seeing a pile of mulch.
No, they're very appreciative. Uh, just want to let, uh, folks at home know that tonight we taped a segment on recycling. So if you tune, tune in to our cable channels, uh, 6 and 99, you can watch a 15-minute presentation of recycling. Um, and if you watched the last board meeting, we're trying to increase our recycling tonnage and reduce our refuge tonnage. And by doing the reduction in refuge tonnage, our numbers, the tipping fee cost at the local animal will be less, and the residents will be charged less, and Royce Drum will charge less, et cetera. So it's important for everyone to practice good recycling, so please turn in. Um, it was a good 15-minute segment. Um, my last item, Your Honor, I want to bring up, um, there was an incident, uh, September 29th, uh, there was an altercation which was inside, it actually was outside the business, it was in the street. Um, this altercation was two individuals in a fisticuff. Uh, happened to be around midnight. It was taped, it was placed on YouTube for viewing. I watched it several times. Um, I've talked to the board, I've talked to our police department. Um, I think the police officer, Officer Ucho, did an outstanding job, uh, at what occurred and was taped. Uh, he was, uh, actually in his zone and, uh, came across, crossed the incident and reacted properly, did a fantastic job. And what I'd like is to have Police Chief Paddlecheck come up and tell us a little bit about it and kind of, and, uh, kind of go into it.
I don't know else I can add, Manager Keener, but, uh, you hit all the high points that I would have. The officer was in his zone, doing what he was supposed to be doing, came across this altercation in the street. Um, as I responded to a member of the community an email this week, um, it wasn't as uncivilized an event as you might think because that officer was by himself for a few minutes, and the fact that they didn't turn an attack on him, I thought was, uh, a good thing. Um, but in the end, we arrested two people, uh, for fighting out in the street. And, uh, I, I don't know what makes people, it's, it's a new era for a lot of us, all these things show up on YouTube and the internet, and the fact that half a dozen people stood around watching an altercation, videotaping it for fun, um, that speaks to itself, I think. But certainly the officer did an admirable job and the other officers that arrived, we had help from a couple other towns, because at first didn't know what was going on. Turns out it was, uh, uh, two guys. The information that I have is that somebody made some comment disrespecting somebody else's girlfriend. It might have been alcohol, might have been testosterone, you put all those together and you got a problem, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I pass on.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you, Chief. I know you were part of a long email string, uh, so I appreciate your responding to the community members that have reached out to you and working with them, and I understand you'll be attending a meeting or two with certain residents to talk to them about the incident as well. So I appreciate that. Uh, I have also had a conversation with the tavern owner who, uh, or bar owner who has said it is one of the biggest mistakes in nine years of owning, that, uh, and that the, the parties will not be, are not welcome back for an event held at his, uh, establishment. Um, and, uh, and I guess I'll go from there. If you want more information, the Chief of Police would be a fantastic person to talk to about it. Uh, and I, I think he's going to one or two public meetings. Go ahead and, uh, invite yourself and come with him while he, while he speaks to those different groups. Uh, with that, we will go to, are you done?
Yes, sir.
All right. I know you had a long list there, I wasn't sure. Uh, we will go to Village Attorney's Report.
No report.
Uh, Village Trustees, Trustee Davis?
You really like me today, don't you? Uh, a couple of things. Um, and I have a script for this, this year, for the first time, Community Pride Commission is having Halloween Decorations Awards. If you see a house or houses in your neighborhood that you think deserve this special recognition, please email the address to pride@invillapark.com before October 26th. Also, it's that time of year again, the Pride Commission is getting ready for the annual Chili Cook-Off and Cornbread Contest. Applications are due by October 29th. Cook-Off is at 7:00 AM November 3rd at Iowa Community Center. Entry forms and info is all, is available at invillapark.com. Okay, and now, Police Chief, how many guys are we short on the street? I've been asked this question. Two?
Yes.
Two guys we're down. How much did that fight cost this town, do you think? Email me.
We didn't, uh, we didn't expend, uh, expend any extraordinary funds on that.
No.
That was part of, and all the officer responded, I mean, there were a couple part-timers already on duty that night, so they were already working.
How many officers in, from our town and other towns responded?
10. Maybe, maybe 15.
Maybe 15.
Yeah.
For how long?
Don't know for sure. Probably, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to guess.
Is there a way we can charge businesses that we have to respond in such force like that?
Uh, I reviewed the tape, I read the police reports to see if that was a possibility. My understanding is the fight occurred in the street because our recourse, where we have these kinds of disruptive incidents, is to review the liquor license and if situations like that that was experienced is an ongoing type of, or regular incident at the establishment to pull their liquor license. Uh, in terms of, of us as a non-homer municipality, making the individual liable for us to, in fact, engage in our police protection services, it would be very difficult to prove. It would be very difficult to enforce. I do not think we have the authority.
But we're already charging for ambulance fees?
We're charging for ambulance fees because it's a service over and above what is police protection and a special service with specially trained people to, um, render service. Furthermore, it's generally covered by insurance, it's generally covered by Medicaid as a general understanding. I don't know of any town that has been able to collect for police enforcement. Yes, if you have a permit for a parade and you cause, uh, litter problems, uh, extraordinary, um, of police occurrence, but not where it's just pure enforcement of the, uh, public safety.
If it's a troublesome business, are we allowed to charge?
If it's a troublesome business, absolutely. We, if there's a, a situation where the business, where we pull their license, we fine the business. If we think the business has been encouraged, engendered, failed to control on any of those issues.
Thank you. Mr. President? That's all for tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Davis. Trustee Bullwinkle?
Thank you. Manager Keener, just looking for a few updates. It's my usual thing. Um, the status of the demo plans at the House at 246 North Wisconsin. Wondering if we have a date set for that yet?
No, we don't. We have, uh, an estimate of two to three weeks.
Okay.
And, um, I believe what is taking place is they need to supply the village, uh, a scope of work, basically, a site plan and et cetera, survey of the area, and they have not done yet, that yet, so. We have not okayed the demo permit because we need some other material.
Okay. I'm sorry that they won't allow the fire department to play around with that as a training exercise, but, yes, we do. We have a long list, so, but I'm glad, thank you for checking on that.
You're welcome.
You never know until you try, so. Um, the second question is, what's the status of the Roosevelt Road Sidewalk Project?
That is a very good question. Director of Public Works, Vitas?
I believe that all that remains is some parkway restoration, otherwise all work has been completed.
So what's the ETA for completion completion?
Uh, the state has to approve the plantings.
Ugh, okay.
So, once that's done, the contractor can complete.
Enough said there. All right. We're close. Okay, good. Um, Manager Keener, North Park Mall?
Yes.
Terms of, where we stand in terms of the pending auction that's likely to occur there?
Uh, it's still in Bank Rupsey Court, and there is really not an update for the, uh, the termination or the selling of it. It's still in the, in the court house.
We still have developers that are inquiring about, we're keeping them up to speed.
That's correct.
That's a really interesting opportunity for us, so.
Yes.
All right. Great, great, great. And then, um, when are we planning on breaking ground on the skate park? Do we have a ETA on that?
Um.
This year, I hope, still? We need to be this year?
We, uh, we submitted or published, uh, the invitation to bid on the project a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
We're actually having a, a pre-bid meeting tomorrow, 11 o'clock.
Okay, good.
Uh, bid opening the following Tuesday, 11:00 AM, and we're hoping to break ground, um, with board approval of the winning bid, um, end of October, early November.
Okay, good. So still this year, so we don't lose any kind donations and all the grants that are floating?
We're shooting, we're doing everything we can to go with this year.
Good deal. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, um, regards to the stump grinding, I've seen that all over town, and one thing I came across, I don't know what the village's plans are for the tree replacement program, you know, if we have one in place or if we're working on one, but when and if we do, I learned recently that CSX Railroad, they provide grants for tree, for tree restoration and tree replacement. I'm doing some research on that, but I, I just kind of stumbled upon that almost kind of, sort of, by accident, so I wanted to mention that. Um, I'm doing a little bit of research on that myself, and if I find out anything that you all may not already know, I'll let, I'll, I'll pass that on. But I thought that was very interesting. We've lost a lot of trees over the last few years due to Mother Nature and other bugs and things like that, so I thought that was interesting. Um, just a quick reminder that on October 22nd through December 7th, residents can put as many bags of leaves and debris that you want on the curb for free. You don't have to buy the stickers for that, so, um, since that time is approaching, just wanted to give that, you know, the residents a heads up about that. The information's also on the village website at invillapark.com. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bullwinkle.
Absolutely, Your Honor. Yes, uh, just to follow up a little bit about the tree grant, uh, the village recently was awarded a $8,000 Emerald Ash Borer Grant, and through some of those funds, we are going to be replacing some of the trees that we have, uh, cut down and, and ground the stump, so.
Good.
And how far are we on the Emerald Ash Borer trees?
It's a very good question. We have to find out, Your Honor.
All right. If we can get that information, because I know the grant, what was the grant total that was going to have to come down, Vitas? How many were going to have to come down?
A couple hundred.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Trustee Ayala?
I, there's a, one thing. The train, uh, keeps morning, Saturday morning trains keep stopping for some reason. Uh, I'm wondering if there's an explanation for why that is. We've got a couple calls on that, and just curious if there's an explanation for why, why is it happening? Maybe, maybe it's always happened and it just suddenly got unlucky to hit it, and I'm noticing it now. Anybody know why?
Your Honor, a question? Once, once we're reported that the trains have been longer than 20 minutes, we contact our liaison that we have for the railroad. And, um, I put the liaison right in contact with the resident, whoever's complaining, so I, I'm not the middleman, so they get the information exactly from the liaison.
Got you. Okay. Nothing further.
Thank you. Trustee Boulis?
We've got a couple calls on that, and just curious if there's an explanation for why, why is it happening? Maybe, maybe it's always happened, and it just suddenly got unlucky to hit it, and I'm noticing it now. Anybody know why?
Your Honor, a question. Once, once we're reported that the trains have been longer than 20 minutes, we contact our liaison that we have for the railroad, and, um, I put the liaison right in contact with the resident, whoever's complaining, so I, I'm not the middleman, so they get the information exactly from the liaison.
Got you. Nothing further.
Thank you. Trustee Balthus?
No, I've talked enough.
Trustee Taglia?
Just quickly, I'd like to thank the Kiwanis for sponsoring the Golf Under the Stars. It was a lot of fun. I attended. I'd like to thank particularly the president of the Kiwanis Club, Principal Dan Kraus. I'd also like to thank our very own clerk, Hosanna Koreneke, who's the vice president of the Kiwanis Club, our former village president, Ray Rupsearch, who's the secretary, and the various members that helped at the table. Bev Johnston is a lady who was there, and she helped me. And I'd also like to thank Pastor Steve Swanson, who I saw was in attendance. I believe he's a member. Also, I'd like to say, uh, the light, the lighted balls really helped. It's the first time I've golfed and not lost a ball, so that was a personal achievement for me. Also, I'd just like to do a report from the Senior Concerns Commission. The commission reports that they really enjoyed and appreciated the salt meeting that they had that was led by Sergeant Tyson Johnson, and they'd like to thank him. They also look forward to future events with the police department. Uh, the commission continues to keep Commissioner Sale Aiello and their thoughts and prayers, and they look forward to him returning very soon. So that is the extent of my approach.
Thank you, Trustee Taglia. Trustee Case?
Uh, just a manager, uh, question from Manager Keener, just to show that I'm asking in regards to the tree trimming project that we have received a notice two months ago from ComEd in all the backyards.
That's a very good question. We met, uh, this week with ComEd, and, um, I received that very same postcard also, and they have not been in my home either to trim. And, uh, I did not get an accurate answer from our representative for ComEd, but I will ask again.
And our other question about the pole?
That's, that's a good question. Uh, just so the folks at home understand, uh, there is this particular power pole, uh, located in a yard that's actually leaning and it's cracked, and, uh, I have asked on numerous occasions to have the pole replaced, again, working through our liaison at ComEd, and the email that I keep receiving is I'm going to check with our, our work crew in the field and let you know over it. And that's my latest response I receive.
Coming down to a point where people are giving up asking for them to do anything because they're not going to get nothing done. So if it starts a fire, it starts a fire.
I will call again tomorrow. I'll call.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, real quick, before we move on to the committee of the whole, I just want to thank MCC. We had a fantastic Saturday at the motorcycles, uh, at, at MCC Motorcycles. Trustee Balthus and Trustee Bullwinkle were there. Alicia Bailey with the Chamber Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Al Stash was out filming and looking around, and I'll tell you what, if you have not been over to the old Oakfield Ford and seen MCC, even if you don't ride motorcycles, that place is awesome. The, the motorcycles there are sharp looking. I, I think I saw Trustee Balthus get on one or two and do some wheelies down the street. I wasn't sure if that was him or not, but, uh.
That was me.
But it was him, all right, it was him. But it was a, uh, it was a great event, and I'll tell you what, they had people in there all day long. Uh, and according to both Jeff and Greg, their, their revenue or their sales are up about 20% since moving in there, 20 to 30%. So it's been a benefit to them. It's also been a benefit to this village, uh, and, and I'm very glad that they are where they are at, and, uh, boy, if you get a chance, go take a look at it. It is sharp, and it is clean, and it is beautiful looking. Um, and I was very glad to be a part of it. Uh, and beyond that, we will now go to recess to the committee of the whole.
We have one other thing. Executive session?
Oh, yeah, we've got one more item. Hold on, sorry. Up, sorry, item 20, or item 19. My fault. Public comments on non-agenda items. Sorry, I went right from 18 to committee of the whole. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing non-item 20, consider executive session, RE 5, ILCS, C1, personnel matters and collective bargaining, 5 ILCS, 120/2, C5 litigation, 5 ILCS, 120/2, C11, purchase or lease of real property for the public body, and 5 ILCS, 120/2, C28, meetings between internal or external auditors and governmental audit committees, finance committees, and their equivalents. Can I have a motion to consider executive session?
Mr. President.
Trustee Aiello?
Moving to consider executive session.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Case?
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
No.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Pressing Colleton.
We will go into executive session. Item 21, now recess to committee of the whole. One, resolution to approve the purchase of two Dodge Chargers through Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. The police patrol division utilized marked vehicles as an integral function of its day-to-day operations. On a continuous, continuing basis, these vehicles are reviewed to ensure safe and economical operating conditions. Review factors include maintenance costs, excessive downtime vehicle appearance, and mileage. Currently, there are five vehicles in the police department fleet whose mileage has exceeded 95,000 miles, two of which have exceeded 115,000 miles. These two vehicles currently in use have far exceeded, exceeded general accepted recommendations for first responder vehicle operations, and there is a need to replace these vehicles. Replacement vehicles are available via the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Program, contract number 120. It's recommended that two vehicles be purchased for patrol assignment from the authorized vendor, Napleton Fleet Group, in the amount of $22,466 per vehicle for a total purchase cost of $44,932. Funding for this purchase will be split between the department's drug forfeiture account and the village's vehicle replacement fund. In the near future, these high mileage vehicles will be added to our inventory of surplus property and will be disposed of in an appropriate manner for proof. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public?
Mike Olowski with the Village of Villa Park. Um, my question is, is it status quo now, just, just to replace police vehicles at a certain mileage? Uh, the reason that I bring that up, I know the state of Illinois for state police agencies, um, they've run, they've got vehicles running out on the highways of the state of Illinois, and their vehicles are exceeding 144,000 miles, speed limits of much excess of what we do in, in, I would hope, within the Towneville Park. Um, plus, I don't know what the village, how the village maintains the vehicles, if they've switched over to a synthetic oil, um, which I know what the state has gotten the vehicles to, uh, continue much longer with less maintenance. Um, plus the fact, maybe if, whenever they were at the 711 on Addison Road, they turned the cars off, that would probably help too.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the board? Real quick, actually, can I ask the chief, uh, do we need these to be Dodge Chargers?
We need them to be, uh, reliable and, uh, police-ready vehicles. Um, in the market these days for cars, uh, the Dodge Charger, uh, the Ford Crown Victoria is gone. Uh, Ford has a couple different models. One was a version of the Explorer, I think, and the other was a version of the Taurus. Uh, Chevy also came back into the market with this model. We looked at all the vehicles, and I assigned this job to a couple of staff members. We generally take our largest officers to see what cars they fit in best. Because they've got to ride these things, eight-hour shifts, 24 hours a day.
Right.
So, uh, we take into consideration, and I can appreciate Mike's comments, especially about fleet use, uh, we also have to involve the fleet, uh, department in our, uh, you know, selection of vehicles, make sure they have the equipment, you know, to maintain and look at these, plus when you buy them, knew they're under warranty for a while. Um, so, the Ford, the consensus amongst my staff and working with the fleet and the other, the village departments is to go with the Charger. We have one in the fleet already. We're also looking forward to what Dodge is doing next year. They're going to an all-wheel drive in the police vehicle next year, which is where we'd like to get headed for inclement weather, better to have all-wheel drive.
I'm just curious, because we have a couple auto dealers in town, would it, would it benefit us to sort of keep the revenue in town?
I, I.
If one of our, what do we have, two full dealerships, two new dealerships in town? If one of our two new dealerships could actually handle the?
If we, um, somebody help me out with the bidding process, if we go to an independent dealer in town, we're going to have to then go out for bids for the vehicle. We go through the cooperative, uh, the bidding's already done, which protects us.
Okay. All right.
I have one more comment. On the type of vehicle, I know the, uh, the Ford, if you want to look at Ford, Fords are actually made in the state of Illinois, which would help out jobs in Illinois. I know the Taurus is their, uh, current vehicle that they are putting out as a police vehicle. You can buy it actually pre-assembled. It's got the wiring, the lights, everything's already installed on it, and all you've got to do is put your radio equipment and other equipment that you need. And the all-wheel drive vehicle, yeah, that's their Explorer, and that's actually a pretty nice vehicle, too.
Any other questions or comments?
From the board, Wes?
Yes.
Well, to top, add on to Mike, you're right, those, the Ford Police Interceptors is what they are called. Only police or military can buy them. They're built in Torrance Avenue. They're already all-wheel drive. I did talk to the chief beforehand, because I, I've seen a show where they compared the Chevy, the Ford, and the Dodge, and Dodge was second. But they're the ones driving the cars, so I'll have to leave it to that, so.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Balthus?
I thought the vehicle replacement fund didn't have any money in it.
Manager Keener?
Thank you. It has some funds that are, have been left over, and if I'm not mistaken, some of the vehicle funds from the seized cars or the cars that we have have sold, we've put those funds back into the re, uh, replacement vehicles.
That's even after we bought the fire chief's car?
Yes, there's still money in it. And then, Vadas, would you like to?
The, uh, the bond issue from a few years ago was about half a million dollars, so there are funds remaining from, from that bond issue that have not been expended. That's even after the other purchases and after we pay off the two leases that we still have, two years left on. There's, there's still about 90,000 left, plus we've been taking in proceeds from auction sales, so that's been building up the balance also.
The bonding money, is that reflected in your budget adjustment? Is that 25,000 that's in the bud, next item?
Yes, that's in the bu, that's where the, the funding source for the budget amendment for that item is coming from.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments for the board? Consensus?
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
No.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Pressing Colleton.
This item will move to the formal. Item two, consider amendment number two to the FY 2012, 2013 Annual Budget. Manager Keener?
Thank you, Your Honor. To better track expenses and revenues during the course of the current fiscal year, staff is introducing proposed budget amendments on a periodic basis rather than annually. Budget Amendment Number Two proposes changes to the NESRA, equipment replacement, land and buildings, water supply and wastewater funds. A two-thirds vote of the corporate authorities is required to approve an ordinance for these proposed changes. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the board? Consensus?
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Pressing Colleton.
This will move to the formal. Uh, item three, consider an ordinance of the Village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, amending the regulation of animals within the village. No explanation, so I will go to any questions or comments from the board?
Yes.
Would you like to?
Would you like an explanation?
Would you like an explanation?
Yes, yes, please.
Very good.
This ordinance, uh, was, uh, drafted in response to a discussion by this village board in connection with the animals that were mauled and the loss of an animal by one of the Village, Villa Park residents. This ordinance allows the designation of a dangerous animal and a dangerous dog, and if the dog is deemed dangerous, it cannot run, uh, uh, at large, it has to have certain confinement requirements, there are certain, uh, limitations in terms of the dog being amongst public neighbors or anyone else. There is a definite description of what conduct designates or, or would result in the designation of a dog as dangerous, and once that designation is made, it can either be made through a court of law or in our own administrative hearing process. So what we've tried to do is establish, and it's a cumbersome system, as the chief will testify, a, a system whereby we can fairly and with due process ascertain if there is a dog that might in fact be dangerous, and if that is the case, to protect the public from that dog.
Please, Joe.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the public?
John Squeal, Northside Resident, Villa Park.
Speak a little louder, John, please.
John Squeal, Northside Resident, North Lincoln Avenue, Villa Park.
Thank you, John.
I want to talk about that incident over there on here, that happened, I believe, back in early August. I just want to say that after I found out about that, I went and monitored that area probably about five to seven times a day for about two weeks. As I was informed here that people were afraid to walk their dogs or walk their children. Well, I was there, and everybody was at the park continuously walking their dogs, so I think the Villa Park Police Animal Control actually did a very good job. As we already have vicious animal laws through the state and through the county, and it is a cumbersome, cumbersome system, and the reason it is that way is because in order for a dog to be labeled vicious, the county actually requires multiple incidents because it's not fair. What contributes to these incidences can be situational, environmental, and they usually require an investigation to go along with it, as you know, so.
We've not included vicious. All we've included is dangerous.
I understand, right.
And, and, um, and I couldn't agree with you more, that, uh, the designation of a dangerous dog would have to be after a hearing, and so the owner would have an opportunity to point out if there was some, um, instigation of the situation, et cetera.
This, this just causes so many problems. I mean, I monitor this every day around the world, around the country, what goes on, because the reason people do this is to science white regulations. You know, we live in one of 12 states that is a very, very dog-friendly state, you know, Illinois, and I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. I want everything, I have, there's, there's a lot of programs that I, I'd like to present to the board, government programs, educational programs, even some stuff I'd like to share with the chief, on how to educate the public on how to deal with, deal with things that could go along with it. I just want to make sure it doesn't get out of control, and because it affects insurance rates for people, it affects landlords, tenants, there's, there's a lot involved there, and I want the entire ordinance posted so people can see it, so I can share with other people. I've already contacted a few people because it could get carried away and.
The other thing we want to do to, is to make it a local ordinance so that we can deal with it locally as opposed to leaving it to the state and county, so that suddenly we have a dog owner who is the victim of an instigation, and suddenly the dog is taken away. So this ordinance, um, really tries to establish a system for us to deal with the issues.
Being that it was an isolated incident, the reason I say that, I've had incidences where I've been approached and I had a potential attack on one of my dogs, uh, but this was over a four-month period. Same dog would run out and approach my dog as I was walking. I know how to handle situations, I know how to handle these things, and that's where the education part comes in. And over a four or five-month period, after the fourth time, dogs have dominant features that they'll use on other dogs. It's canine and canine aggression, it's, it's, it's just their behavior, they're usually just dogs being dogs. Anyway, I had to involve the police after the fourth time because the dog, and he wasn't a vicious dog, he was just being a dog, but he locked his jaws on my dog. As a, as a dominance feature, that's what dogs do. Sometimes they get carried away, and if it's a smaller dog, they can hurt them. After the fourth time, after telling these people over several months, you have to get your, and get your tags on your dogs and get them under control. I had to call the police. First thing I told the police was, do not ticket them. This dog is not vicious, it's the owner's fault, and this is where I'm going as far as owner responsibility. Had I released my dogs to defend themselves, there was one dog and four smaller dogs all nipping at my dog. Had I released my dogs, now this is very important because it gets, it gets out of hand across the country. Had I released my dogs, they would have been labeled vicious or dangerous. Had I released my dogs, they would have been labeled vicious or dangerous. So there's a lot of incidences that cause these things. I was at the furry pack last summer, at a Kiwanis concert, and there was a group of children. I sit with the same person every year, and she has her, her large Rottweiler, and we have our dog. There was a group of children running at me with cardboard cutout swords, lashing out at my dog, and they were going in circles. Even though I told them to stop, I had to move. I had to move 30 feet away. They continued to do that. Had my dog snapped, he could be labeled dangerous. So there's so many variables when these things happen, that the more education that is involved, as opposed to ordinances, we already have them in place through the county and state, and I think they do very well. And to give local control, I offered some information here back in August when I spoke. I got no offers from everybody. And I have a lot of information on this stuff. So, you know, it's a, it's a big deal. It's not an epidemic, but, you know, sometimes people make it seem that way, and it's very unfortunate to lose your animal. I mean, I just put my, one of my dogs down Friday, old age, so I know how it is, and I keep an eye on these things around town. The main thing you need to do is enforce your leash laws, and it does not get enforced in any town, particularly Villa Park, I see it all the time. And we can prevent a lot of these problems. I just don't want to see any particular dogs get labeled in any unnecessary way, that's all. And I'd like, you know, it not to be rushed through, and I want people to have a chance to, to see what it's about, that's all. I'm good.
Thank you, John.
And I want it to be colored political than you.
And John, we'll make sure we put it up on the, on the website.
Okay. I'd like to see it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the board?
President Colleton?
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Manager Keener, what's the mode of communication to residents who may be subject to this or whatever the case may be? How are we going to let them know? If, especially if we've had a repeat occurrence, let's just say, as an example?
Well, the mode, I mean.
How will we let them know that this is going to be on the books potentially?
Well.
If it does make it to the books.
It's going to be on the website tomorrow.
Right. Any other, I mean, we reach out individually, I mean, especially if we have a list of, that are really?
Retroactive.
No? Oh, okay.
It's not explosive, get past the ordinance, go backwards from previous offenses.
Okay.
Those four three days past.
Okay. Well, as long as we let people know about this, because they may not have access to the website or.
Well, one of the ways is through our licensing efforts is to, when we license, is to advise them that they might want to review the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, whatever communication we can get out there, the better. So this isn't a surprise. Okay.
Mr. President?
Trustee Davis?
I just want to clarify and make sure this is based on the conduct of, of a dog and it's not breed-specific, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's very important.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the board?
Mr. President?
Trustee Balthus?
I noticed that through here, this, this whole ordinance, they also refer to cats, the number of cats.
Yes.
I thought we couldn't regulate numbers of cats.
I believe we can if we can regulate dogs. I have not reviewed any prohibition on the part of a village, municipality to regulate the number of cats. I'm sure I'll hear about it if there is one, but I have not been informed. I don't know, where did you learn that?
Well, for, sitting up here for eight years, we can't regulate the number of cats because the state, for a non-home rule, we're not told that we can do cats, we can do dogs.
Actually, we've been, I, I think we have been, we've been told the amount of animals, but we've been told we cannot regulate people who feed.
Feral cats.
Feral cats. We've always been told we cannot do anything about feral cats and people who feed them or anything else. I do believe we already have in the books, though, an ordinance on the amount of pets.
No, I think it's just dogs.
Or is it just dogs?
It's just dogs.
I'd be very pleased to hear if there is a regulation. The fact of the matter is, is we have police powers, and by police powers, we have health, and that's what allows us to regulate the number of persons living in a dwelling per night, not per square feet, and the number of cats and dogs. But if there is information out there that I haven't learned in 37 years, I'd be happy to hear it.
I don't know what to tell you, you know?
Yes.
We heard it for eight years.
Yeah.
I have.
Yeah.
Can't do it, can't do it, can't do it, can't do it. Because we get a lot of complaints about the number of cats.
I understand that, and there is a serious.
In ways you can't do it.
Right, there is a serious health hazard in many instances. Because it's not three, it's 103.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Trustee Taglia?
I just want to point out to the residents, if they haven't seen this ordinance, it's very large, it's a 24-page ordinance, a lot of information that needs to be gone through. So I hope that this is posted on the website so that we can try to see it. And that'll be out some time on your hands, so it's pretty lengthy. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the board? Consensus to move this to the formal?
Trustee Taglia?
No.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
No.
Is that, that's a no?
That's a no.
President Colleton?
That will move to the formal. Go back to item 12, Resolution to Approve the Purchase of Two Dodge Chargers Through Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. Can I have a motion on the resolution?
Mr. President?
Trustee Davis?
I have a motion.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Aiello?
Second.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Taglia?
No.